Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the Fridley Public School Board meeting for December 17th, 2019. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. All rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Beginning, do I have a motion to approve the agenda for the meeting this evening?
Motion to approve.
Second?
A motion by Prowato, seconded by Adam, to approve the agenda for December 17th, 2019. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion passes. Next, we move on to spotlight on recognition, beginning with the Employee of the Month for December. Dr. Heil.
Thank you. Evening, good evening Board Chair Riddle and school board members. This evening, our Employee of the Month for the month of December is Matthew Weber. He's a technology assistant at Fridley Middle School. Matthew Weber is an incredible person. He is not only helpful and supportive of Fridley Middle School staff, but also goes above and beyond for our students every single day. He is incredibly kind, responsive, supportive, knowledgeable, and hardworking. He is consistently dedicated to our staff and students at Fridley Middle School. He has scheduled time to specifically work with students to get them logged in, figuring out campus portal, and learning skills to help themselves. Beyond helping our students, Mr. Weber shows his dedication to the staff. He rarely assists all teacher, ensures that he helps as soon as possible. His communication to us is always respectful, thoughtful, and keeps us informed of progress. Matthew goes above and beyond. He deserves this more than anyone else, and that's from Principal Amy Cochran at the middle school.
Thank you, and congratulations to Matthew. Next will be a recognition for school board service.
Yes. Chair Riddle, it is with pleasure that we're going to recognize you this evening for 13 years of service on the school board for Fridley Public Schools. So we want to honor Mr. Riddle tonight for 13 years of service on the Fridley School Board. He has served as a chair, vice-chair, clerk, treasurer, and director during his time on board. You just missed the superintendent in there.
I didn't have the right relationship for that. I wouldn't want to do your job anyway.
Okay. So some of his accomplishments as a member of the Fridley School Board include upgrades of the aging facilities in the district, expansion of Hayes and Stevenson Elementary Schools, and addition of Fridley Moore Lake Area Learning Center. He has supported the implementation of many programs and initiatives such as the district-wide transition to international backglow curriculum, all-day kindergarten, voluntary pre-kindergarten, the passing of operating levies, capital bonds, and levy renewals. He has served as a representative on contract negotiations, a representative for Fridley on the Northwest Suburban Integration District Board, a member of the Board of Trustees for the Fridley Schools Foundation. Mr. Riddle has been devoted his considerable talents and time to the students of Fridley Public Schools and their families, and we, on behalf of our grateful community, and along with Governor Tim Walz, commend Mr. Riddle for his years of service to the students and families of Fridley School District, and wish you, we wish you only the best in your future endeavors. So I would like to present you with an honor proclamation from Governor Tim Walz.
Thank you. You know, it's been an honor for me to be able to serve on this board for the last 13 years. I'm really thankful to the community of Fridley to allow me to do this. It's, as being, you know, an alumni myself, I really do value the public education and really do think that what Fridley offers here is really the best that we can do. So, I mean, we would say, you know, best place to learn, best place to work, I really do think, from my standpoint, it is certainly for that. I mean, back in June of 1983, I was proud to walk across the stage to join the Fridley alumni. Happy to serve on the board for the last 13 years, and coming up at the end of the month, I'll be happy to be able to say now I'll be a proud alumni of the Fridley School Board. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to also add that we're really grateful to you for your service, and the fact that also you're a parent of Fridley Public Schools, so your involvement is very much going to be there, and we just, as a board, have learned a lot from you and appreciate the leadership and the years of service. Thank you very much. We're very grateful to you.
Thank you. All right, next up, we'll move on to superintendent staff reports, beginning by a Tigers United presentation by the Tigers United Group. Ladies.
Good evening, Board Chair Riddle, board members, and Superintendent Heil. We are Tigers United. My name is Assanti Ahmed, and I'm a senior at Fridley High School, and I have been in Tigers United for two years now. And along with me, we have Entisar and Magali. Coley is also a part of our group, but she was unable to attend tonight, unfortunately.
Hi, I am Magali Ruiz. I am a junior this year, and this year is actually my first year in Tigers United.
Good evening. My name is Entisar Adam. I am a senior here at the high school, and this is my second year in Tigers United.
So you guys are probably wondering right now, what is Tigers United? So Tigers United is a student-led group that specifically focuses on creating change. Students discuss issues and brainstorm ideas in order to create a safe environment for all. Our aim is to tackle problems in the school that students find important. Our promise is to take action and create change that will last for a long term. So basically, Tigers United is a group of students that wants to create change, and not only create change, but make sure that everyone feels welcome at our school. We believe that everyone should feel welcomed and feel safe in the environment because we spend most of our day at the high school. So last year, Tigers United created a culture night and a culture week because we believe that students don't really get to know a lot about different cultures at our school, and it's really important because every school is really diverse. So that's what our main focus was last year, so yeah.
So our overall goal, our overall goal is to create a safe, to create a safe environment within the Fridley community, including students, parents, staffs, and teachers, being comfortable with being uncomfortable, and accepting everyone for who they are. So basically, what we wanted to do is we wanted to make sure that equity is in our environment, and to make sure that all our students' voices are heard, whether they're outspoken or not, and make sure they're included in every single thing our school has to offer. So our student involvement, we have six freshmen this year, we have seven sophomores, 12 juniors, and 12 seniors, and we can really get a count of the females. A lot more females than males.
So how do we create an open discussion for students to express their thoughts? So in Tigers United, we have the Rings of Culture, and that is what we use as a basis for our conversations. So the Rings of Culture is basically different groups that we could all fit in, and it's not only just like ethnic and nationality, it's a lot more, and we wanted to use that as a way to connect students and to make them feel as if they are a part of a much bigger community and not just little groups that they're in. So we have meetings at our, club meetings on like Tuesdays and Thursdays during the month, and we start off with a question and basically talk about what students think could change and what we could do to initiate this rather than just talking about it.
So our official topic this year is mental health. We believe that mental health is super important in our school. We believe that in order to, you know, just start off your day in general, you have to be mentally, mentally okay, you know, in order to go and move forward with your day. So this year, our main goal is to focus on mental health and how we can make all of our students feel safe in our environment and just, you know, move along throughout the day.
At our last meeting, we had a discussion with all the students, and we were in, put in little groups, and we spoke about steps that we could take to improve the mental health, like conditions in our school. And so the three things that we all agreed on was, one, we thought that we should hire more counselors and social workers for students to confide in. In our school, we all talk to Kelsey when something is going wrong, and we really appreciate having her, and so sometimes we wish that there were more people like her that we could go talk to rather than just all running to her when she might not have the time. Second, we all thought that we should create classes that teach about mental health and encourage students to talk about struggles. So we thought that before we could tackle the problem that we have in our school, people must know about it, and that they should know enough so that there isn't like any confusion and that people don't think mental health is just some sort of disorder. It could also be stress, it could be feeling anxious, and there are many different things that go to it. Third, we thought that we should create a safe space for students to relax and calm down in. So one thing we noticed in our school is that there's not really one place that we could go to to just calm down and relax and just be kids. And I feel like since now there's social media, everybody wants to hang out with their friends, school doesn't really have, like, we don't have the time to get everything we want. So we thought that like if there are times where we want to calm down, just take a minute and recollect ourselves, then we should have that little safe space and even a classroom or a little corner in the school somewhere that we could just go and take some time to ourselves. And any questions?
Wow, I have so many questions, but I won't ask them all. I think this is amazing. So a couple of questions. Is there a teacher or a counselor or some, an adult that is with you guys so somebody can start implementing some of your ideas, or how are we, how, what's the plan to move forward? Because I think you have some great ideas, so how can we help? Like, what's the next steps?
So in Tigers United, we work very closely with Ms. Phelps and Mr. Listico. They have been the people that are pushing us and telling us that we can get some change done, and so they're the people that we go to when we need help.
Perfect. Well, and I just want to say that you're showing more initiative than most adults that I know, and that's really impressive. These are hard conversations to have, they're hard topics to address, you know, they're touchy, and so I just want to give you kudos for going out into the classroom and being that leader. That's hard. It's hard at any age, so I think that you're on a really great path, so I'm excited to see what comes next.
And I just want to acknowledge, you know, the voice, student voice, elevating it and making it, you know, make a difference is something that we really appreciate as a board. You are the future leaders, and so you see issues that we do not see. So we really want you to feel that the board is supporting you fully and for you to grow to your greatest potential.
Absolutely, if we can help out, absolutely.
And just a reminder, our three ladies, as well as Coco, who's not here this evening, will be our student representative on the board starting in January, so we'll have one of our ladies each month will be a representative. And so as well as whatever they're, they are bringing to us in that area, they also will work with the superintendent, and we work with Ms. Hand and administration there to help work towards the goals of what they're doing. So what they're doing is live action planning, and we plan to do something with it, not just waste our beautiful students' time, so. And I believe, Entisar, you got accepted into St. Kate's. Congratulations.
Congratulations. And what are you going for? Do you have a path?
I want to major in anatomy, and then hopefully get my PA and become a physician assistant.
Awesome. Good for you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, ladies.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's awesome.
Next, in the not favorable position to follow students, we have Ms. Van Gorp talking about the Fridley Schools Foundation.
That is a tough act to follow, man. But what I will say in watching and listening to those students, Fridley Public Schools has got it going on. That is awesome, and it is so fun as a long-term, 30-plus person working in the district, retired from the district as the high school principal, seeing students take initiative and show the leadership, because you're absolutely right. They are the ones who are going to be making leadership decisions for all of us in the future, so, boy, that is great. Thank you. Good evening, everybody. I am Renee Van Gorp. I currently serve as president of the Fridley Schools Foundation. The Fridley Schools Foundation began in 1999, so we're coming within our 20th year of existence. It is a 501(c)(3) organization, nonprofit, exclusively designed for charitable and educational purposes, specifically to raise and disperse funds in support of public education in the Fridley Public Schools, and to generally offer support for the goals of public education in the district. Our mission of the foundation is committed to opening doors and enhancing educational opportunities for students. We are an all-volunteer group. We don't have the luxury of some other large school foundations who seem to have lots of beneficiaries, legacy funding, and paid employees. So even though we've been around for 20 years, I would consider us still in the infancy stage of building and growing. But let me show you a few things that we're doing to help kind of what I can say, grow the organization. So you can see, mark your calendars for September 16th, 2020. Then we will have our fourth Get Your Paws Moving Walk as a fundraiser for the foundation. We have raised just under $8,000 in our past three walks, and I will tell you, two out of the three, weather wasn't so good. But it is just a great way to come out, spend an hour, walk with your friends, walk with your colleagues, your family. Faculty were out doing it, so a great way to support the mission of the foundation and give back to the Fridley Public Schools. Another thing is, tickets are selling fast here for the upcoming Black and Gold Gala. This is our biggest fundraiser of the year. It's filled with positive energy and a sense of community. It is just awesome, and people tell us what fun it is to come to. We have raised over $52,000 in our last two galas, and we're even hoping even more money this year. You can purchase tickets, tables, sponsorship, or just outright donate to the cause. And you can see that it will be on January 30th at Jack's Cafe. Dinner, raffles, games, camaraderie, it's a very fun, fun evening. During this evening, we also recognize the contributions made to the foundation and the district through our Golden Apple Award. Past recipients have been Margaret Leibfried and Gordon Backlin. This year, our honoree will be Bob Barnett at the gala, so looking forward to that upcoming in January.
And where can we get those tickets?
You can get those tickets either at Fridley School, Fridley Schools Foundation.org, or you can call the district office, and they can most certainly help you with that. So we would love to have new faces as well as old faces come and return, so it's a great, great event. Another thing that we've been doing is using proceeds from our events to fund our educator grants. Over the past two years, we've given $35,000. We've helped with some literacy projects, we have touched every building through our grant giving, and it's been very fun within the last month to be able to go out to those buildings and present the big check to the recipients of those grant awards to help with innovation things, touch students in ways that maybe, that are above and beyond what the district could fund, and so working in conjunction with the district to see how we can help get projects moving in the classrooms. So that's been really fun. Also, I want you to know that our scholarships are a huge part of what we do with the foundation. It's been generous, generous support of individuals, business, and other charitable organizations. Last year, you can see, we were able to give over $125,000 to support graduating seniors, furthering their education and training. Lots of those scholarship donations come from either individuals who give year after year, and several of our local businesses, as well of our other philanthropic charitable organizations within the community, and it's been awesome. I'd really like to thank at this time to current board members, past board members, for their commitment in helping the Fridley Public Schools. On behalf, I'm proud of how we've come together as a community to really help students enhancing opportunities for them. If anybody would like to get involved in the foundation, we would love, we're always looking for members, so board members, contributions, donations, attending our events would be great. Again, if you would just look at FridleySchoolsFoundation.org, or even call the district office, I'm sure we can help in that. So thank you for allowing me to come today, talk a little bit about the foundation, and the big upcoming gala that's coming at the end of January, so hopefully people will come to support us. So thank you very much. Thanks, everyone, for what they do at the school. Thank you for the board for supporting the district and making the decisions that you do, so I really appreciate it. Any questions you have for me?
I have one question.
You bet.
So what is your typical budget? Now, I know you don't necessarily have a standard budget, but what is your, how much do you typically receive in grant money, in, where do you, I mean, you said you get money from the public, from just philanthropic people? How much, what is your budget approximately?
Well, I mean, I would say, it's kind of one of those, it's almost like a checkbook. It comes in and comes out. I would say we kind of count on things, like when you look at the hundred, if I said $125,000 for scholarships, that's about what our budget is, because that's pretty standard, that the same people, the same organizations will give X amount of dollars. So that kind of does it. Everything else that we do is all just money that we've raised through our events at this point. So we are so beginning, just kind of starting to talk with, how can we do some legacy planning? How can people look at giving, you know, after, and part of their wills and things like that, so that we would have money put aside to start? We really don't have that at this point.
Okay, that was exactly my question.
Unfortunately, yeah, so we're working on it. We do try to put a little bit away, a little percentage from each event away for that legacy, so that we can build on that.
Also, one thing should, just to touch on also, that the foundation does is we do act as, almost as a accounting for some of our booster groups. So we allow them to fall under the 503(c) charter for being a nonprofit for those booster groups, so.
And so, and that money, again, is while it's in the foundation, is earmarked, so we don't have a lot of what I call unrestricted funds.
It's not discretionary. It's basically, we do not have unrestricted non-discretionary funds. They're all discretionary, so.
Well, I participated in the last movie of Pulse event. It was nice to walk through the neighborhood and build friendship with many other community members, so I think that a lot of fun activities that you make possible, so we really appreciate that.
Excellent, thank you. And we do try to find different events that maybe will touch different people in their busy lives, or what they can afford, or things like that, and how they can support the community, so we really appreciate it.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Yep.
Next up, we'll have a truth and taxation presentation. Mr. Hoffman.
Good evening, Chair Riddle, members of the school board. Dr. Heil, it is that time of year for our truth and taxation hearing. I am going to go through an abbreviated presentation. The full scope presentation is on the district's website, so we will jump right in. We will be going over a little bit of the background of school funding, we'll be touching on the district's budget, we will be looking at the proposed tax rate for taxes payable in 2020, and then taking any questions. First part about our budget, our district funds are broken up into a few different funds or checkbooks. They have intended purposes. The general fund is our main fund that we operate within. We do have separate funds for food service, community service, building construction, debt service, internal service funds for our self-insured medical plans, as well as some OPEB trust and OPEB debt service fund for post-employment benefits. So when we look at our budget and actual expenditures for the 18, 19, and 19, 20 school years, down the left side of the different funds of the district, across the top is the fiscal year 19, beginning fund balance, revenues, expenses, ending, and then the 19, 20 budget. Looking at the total bottom line, you can see for fiscal year 19, our fund balance did decrease a little bit from 17.2 million down to 16.7. A big part of that is spending down our construction proceeds from 2015, so if you look at the building construction line right in the middle, you can see we spent almost $3 million compared to revenue of $500,000. So that's the spending down the money we had in the bank for those projects. So when we move forward to the budget for the 19, 20, you can see we are looking at a slight surplus, taking us up to 16.9 million in fund balance. So all part of the budget process to vet these funds, and we worked through the board to get these approved. Looking at our total revenues across the funds, this goes back to kind of the general fund being the main bucket, you can see almost 80% of all revenues for the district are in the general fund. So that's the big primary focus of where most of our operations happen with our students. Looking at just the general fund revenue sources, 79.4% of our revenue comes from the state. Some of it's unrestricted state aid, some of it's restricted for special purposes, compensatory special ed, different pieces like that. Our local revenues is 17.5%, so that's going to be your taxes, fees for service, miscellaneous revenues, and donations, those type of revenues flow through there. And then our federal funding is 3% of our total budget, so just a very small portion. Looking at how we spend our money in the general fund, if you look at it by program, kind of the bottom four slices across the pie chart there, you've got regular instruction, vocational ed, special ed, and instructional support. Really, our directs, you know, contact with students makes up 67 or so percent of our budget. The rest of that is going to be your pupil support, which is mostly your transportation costs and getting kids to and from school, then it's our, more of our administrative sites and buildings and district support services making up the rest. When we look at the type of expenditures, so that was looking at the program aspect, now we're looking at how, you know, what are these expenses? So the blue pie slice on the right and the red on the bottom, that's our people. 73% of our budget is salaries and benefits, so that's the biggest driver of what we do. Purchased services is going to include those transportation costs, consultants, you know, we have to pay for an audit, and those type of things are going to flow through there. And then supplies, capital, and debt service make up the remaining smaller pieces of the pie. So now we shift gears and look at our levy that's before the board for certification Every owner of taxable, taxable property pays property taxes to the various taxing jurisdictions. So the county will have a tax levy, the city will have a tax levy, the school district can levy taxes. So all of these get consolidated into one tax bill, where the county administers the sending of the bills, the collecting of the taxes, and then they remit all the funds back to the various organizations. So whenever you're paying your county taxes, a portion of that comes to the school district. So for school district property taxes, each school district may levy in over 40 different categories. These are either set in state law and have limits and formulas determined for us, and then the other portion is voter-approved. So there's two main categories of levy dollars that school districts receive. So at the high-level overview, the current proposed property taxes are going to increase about 8.6% or $965,000 from the 2019 taxes payable. The biggest difference is a result of the election on November 5th, increasing the voter-approved levy by $310. So now we will shift and look at the higher, big picture of our budget, or of the levy. The yellow column here represents what is going to be the certified levy for 2020, and then the left side, it's listing it by the major categories in which we levy for. The first few line items under the general fund is kind of your voter-approved operating referendum, so that's where you would see that big increase related to the November 5th election. So those other categories are more of the per-state law we're allowed to levy for, operating capital, for safe schools, for long-term facility maintenance, for instructional lease facilities, and those items. We do have adjustments built in, so in the levy cycle, we're levying based on projections and estimates. So what the taxpayers are paying in calendar 2020 is actually revenue for fiscal year 2021. So there's always a two-year look-back period to say, how close were our estimates, and then these levy amounts get trued up in future years. For community service, we have a few line items there for basic community, early childhood, family education, school-age care, and then the debt service is going to be voter-approved or other debt that the districts have the authority to levy for. So this total increase then shows 8.6%. So I look at some of the big changes, like I said before, the operating referendum in local optional revenue is up $1 million, once again, due to the successful vote on November 5th, increasing our operating levy. Looking at our capital projects referendum, this is an annual levy as well that was voter-approved, and it's based on the district's tax base. It's a percentage of that, so as the tax base increases, so in turn does this levy line item, so that's an increase of $82,000. General fund adjustments, so this is where I talked about kind of that look-back period. So when we look back in last year's levy, there was adjustments from two years prior that resulted in an increase in the levy of $161,000. that resulted in an increase in the levy of one hundred and sixty-one thousand. This current levy that we're certifying only has an increased adjustment of fifteen thousand, so it actually looks like a decrease in the tax levy from the previous year. Debt service, long-term facility maintenance, so this was bonds outstanding, this was just part of the scheduled debt payments, there is an increase in that, so that inherently turns around as an increase in the tax levy. So it's part of the big picture of all of the outstanding debt. They all have payment schedules that have various principal and interest payments each year that are predetermined when the bonds are issued. And then within the debt service funds, we are required to levy one hundred and five percent of what our principal and interest payments are. And the reason for this is if there are delinquent tax collections, we still have enough collections to be able to make good on our debt payments. So as those funds accumulate, because we have pretty high collections, so as those funds accumulate in our funds, MDE does a calculation to say if you have debt excess fund balance, so we've accumulated more fund balance than a formula determines is necessary, that excess amount gets basically given back to the taxpayers. So instead of levying them, again, they just say, use the funds you've already collected from previous years and don't levy as much this year. So it's a negative adjustment on the tax levy, so it's using the cash in hand from previous years. So there's a few factors that impact an individual's taxes that they pay. Part of that is a change in their individual property. Part of it's a change in the overall property in the district. So if your property value is increasing at a greater rate than the district as a whole, you may pay more taxes. If it's not, you may pay less. So there's multiple moving parts, and then how other taxing jurisdictions come into play, as well, cities and counties can also impact pieces with that. So when we look at the impact on the taxpayer, this first chart has a lot of numbers, so I'm going to just explain this really quick, and then we'll look at some graphs. But basically, it's starting with 2017 market value and what the taxes were for that value of property in your first two columns, and then as you work your way across, it's going to be 2017, 2018, and 2019. Once you hit the yellow columns, that's where we're saying, here's our 2020 taxes, so this gives you your estimated market value. So in that top row of $100,000 property, the next column over shows what's the increase prior to the November fifth election, so $491, and what's the amount related to that election, which was $55. So the total, you know, estimated tax impact for $100,000 home is $546. So then the next two columns compare, what, how does that dollar amount compare to 2017, where it's $17 more than what they paid in 2017? And it's $27 more than what they paid last year. So when we look at this in the graphical sense, so for a hundred, this first one on the left is $150,000 home. So in 2017, they paid $886, then they paid $899, $870, and now they're up to $904. And that blue little sliver represents the November fifth increase in the operating levy. So you can see, for the most part, the values have stayed pretty stable. We haven't had significant changes in the amount of those individual tax liabilities. And then here, it shows a $300,000 residential home, and then a $600,000 apartment complex, and how their taxes, you can see a very similar trend that's stayed pretty consistent. And that takes us through the quick overview. Like I said, there's more information on the district's website, and later on in the meeting, we will have the formal certification of the tax levy for the board to consider.
Great, thank you.
Thanks.
Next, move on to business action items, starting with the resolution accepting gifts. Again, in this last month, we've been fortunate that we have a community that supports our school, Fridley Public Schools, and in this month, be it resolved that the school board of Fridley Public Schools accepts with appreciation the following gifts received by the district: donating to Fridley Public Schools for outstanding lunch accounts for a total of $1,650 are the Afzad Clinics and St. Philip's Lutheran Church; donating to Hayes Elementary School for a total of $5,050 are the Fridley Lions Club and an anonymous donor; and also donating to the Fridley High School for a total of $300 is also an anonymous donor. Do I have a motion to accept the gifts and thank the donors for their contributions?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion by Stark, seconded by Prueito, to accept the gifts and thank the donors. Any further discussion? Clerk, could you call the roll?
Mr. Adam?
Aye.
Ms. Prueito?
Aye.
Mr. Riddle?
Aye.
Ms. Stark?
Aye.
And the resolution passes, thank you. Next, we have a second reading of several policies and adoption of those policies.
Good evening, Board Chair Riddle, board members, and Superintendent Heil. We have four policies on deck tonight for second reading. Policy 602, Organization of School Calendar and School Day. Policy 603, Curriculum Development. Policy 608, Textbooks and Instructional Materials. And Policy 610 is Field Trips. And as was discussed earlier, there are no new changes to any of these policies.
Right, thank you. With that, do I have a motion to accept the second reading and adoptions of Policies 602, 603, 606, and 610?
Motion moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Adam, seconded by Prueito, to accept the second reading and adoption of the policies. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion passes. Thank you. Next up, we have the motion to the tax levy final certification for pay 2020.
Good evening, Chair Riddle, members of the school board, Dr. Heil. As we just heard the truth and taxation overview, so now it's the actual recommendation for the Board of Education to approve and certify the final property tax levy for taxes payable in 2020 in the amount of $12,180, $12,180, $218.79.
Do I have a motion to approve the levy as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion by Stark, seconded by Adam, to approve the tax levy final certification for pay 2020 levy. Any further discussion or questions? All those in, oh, excuse me, this, yeah, this is a, yeah, this is a motion. So all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion passes. Thank you. Our next item on the agenda is the consent agenda, which includes the minutes of the school board business meeting and work sessions that were held on November nineteenth, 2019, the monthly financial reports, new contracts, amendments, leave of absence, termination, resignations, and retirements, as well as the 2020-2021 High School Registration Handbook. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Prueito and seconded by Stark to approve the consent agenda of routine items previously mentioned. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the consent agenda passes. Next up, we have written information, beginning with first readings of several policies.
Good evening, Board Chair Riddle, board members, and Superintendent Heil. Tonight, we have several policies for you for first reading. The first policy I have this evening is Policy 535, Service Animals. And there were a number of changes on the MSBA, just with some reorganization, so we are looking at taking those changes and putting those into effect with the policy for the first reading. What it does include is it does include a form for individuals to fill out if they are considering a service animal within our school, so that is a change. The next policy is Policy 608, Instructional Services for Special Education, just stating that we will provide special education services to our students. There are not a lot of big changes to this policy. The second, the third one is Policy 611, Homeschooling. This is a brand-new policy that we are looking at for this evening. It goes over the statutes for students or for families who are considering homeschooling. It's something that we already follow, but it's a nice policy to put in place, so it's in written form for our school district. And the last policy that Mr. Petrowski and I are presenting kind of together is Policy 612, Development of Parent and Family Policies for Title I Programs. And there are not a lot of changes to this policy either, just some federal regulations that are in there, and just a few of, a few verbiage changes at this point in time.
Board Chair Riddle, board members, and Dr. Heil, I have three policies for first reading tonight. The first one is graduation standards, outlining current graduation rules according to practices in law, and we are taking out outdated information, and you can see that in the policy, school years 2013, 2014, we're removing those from the current policy. Policy 616 is School District Systems and Accountability. There are a couple of, there's one small change in the general statement, and then we've got a reorganization of Section 3(c). Then Policy 618 is Assessment of Student Achievement, and this is just adding Section Six and Seven in Section Five, and then just reorganizing Six, just two small sections from the MSBA policy.
All right, thank you. As always, these policies are available on the district website. If anyone has any questions, they certainly can call in, or certainly check with the website for reading of these policies. Thank you. Next, we have reports from school board members. This month, we have an Association of Metropolitan School Districts Board Meeting that was held December sixth. Dr. Heil?
Thank you, Chair Riddle, and school board members. At that meeting, there was an approval of the 2020 legislative platform for AMSD, as well as we had two guest speakers. We had Senator Paul Anderson and Senator Greg Claussen spoke as well. Senator Paul Anderson serves on the Policy Finance Committee, and Senator Greg Claussen serves on the Higher Ed and E-12 Education Committee. Senator Anderson shared information about the November state budget forecast. At that time, it was stated that we had a surplus of 1.3 billion for the 2020-21 school year, but the majority of that is considered one-time funding and does not include the cost of inflation. So we will get the final total on that budget forecast in February. Senator Greg Claussen spoke about the E-12, and their main work that they're working on is continue to work on early childhood programs to make sure that we meet the needs of our students under the age of four, as well as working on school safety, as our student representatives had spoke to earlier, the working on the need for schools to have more social workers or counselors or psychologists to help with mental health issues. They also addressed addressing the need of the workforce, Senator Claussen did. He gave an example like in the manufacturing field, so one of the things they want to continue to work on and grow is the youth skills training program, and that's what they're working on with sixteen, for sixteen and seventeen-year-olds at this time. And also just stated the need for more CTE instructors to help our students train in those fields, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, we have important future school board dates. The IB Diploma Celebration and Silver Platter Breakfast will be held December nineteenth at 7:30 a.m. at the Fridley High School. The next Northeast Metro 916 Board Meeting will be held January ninth, 6 p.m. at the Bel Air School. AMSD's Board Meeting is January tenth, 7 a.m. at the Cora Educational Center. The next Northwest Suburban Integration School District Joint Powers Board Meeting will be held January fifteenth at 6:15 at the district offices there for Northwest Suburban. And our next Fridley Public School Board Meeting will be January 21st, work session at 5:30, open forum at seven, and the business meeting at 7:30 here at the Fridley Community Center. Also, just a replug again of the Black and Gold Gala for the Fridley Schools Foundation, that will be January thirtieth, and get your tickets now. That'll be held at Jack's Cafe. Dr. Heil, you'd want to, just the item you wanted to add?
Yes, thank you. Our school board member, Mary Kay Delvo, could not be at the business meeting this evening, but she asked me to share this with you, so this is for Chair Riddle from Mary Kay Delvo. I have been serving on Fridley School Board with Mr. Riddle since 2012, and have come to trust his steady and thoughtful nature, attention to detail, effective but unobtrusive leadership style, and frequent history lessons on the city of Fridley and the district. Chris has been a lifelong advocate and supporter of Fridley Schools, and he is alum of Fridley, still sings in the Fridley Alumni Choir, and is highly engaged parent to his three children, all of whom enrolled in Fridley Public Schools. So while I could not be in attendance this evening, I didn't want to miss the opportunity to thank Chris publicly for his service to Fridley Public Schools. So once again, we applaud you, and we thank you for your time and your commitment that you have given Fridley Public Schools. Thank you, Chair Riddle.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
With that, do we have a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion by Prueito, seconded by Stark, to adjourn the meeting. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And we are adjourned at 8:14. Thank you.